All right. Can get a rule call of the members by the clerk, please.
Supervisor Reynolds.
Here.
Supervisor Jeffrey Trout.
Here.
Supervisor Brownell.
Here.
Supervisor Barnhart.
Here.
Supervisor Borst.
Here.
Supervisor Hayes.
Here.
Supervisor Ferrara. Supervisor Cronenwetter.
Here.
Supervisor Reinhardt.
Here.
Supervisor Partee.
Here.
Supervisor Heisen.
Here.
Supervisor Don Trout.
Here.
Supervisor Enzlo.
Here.
And Supervisor Shipley.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence, please.
To the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, first, we've got one public hearing tonight. Can get, uh, first public hearing for local law C of the year 2023.
Motion, open public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor opening public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Public hearing is now open. Anybody from the public would like to speak? Seeing none?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, got a second. First to close the public hearing. And discussion on closing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. All right, presentations. I don't think we have anything tonight. No petitioners. Open privilege of the floor. Anybody like to address the board? All right, don't all yell at once. Okay. Can get a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Reports of any special committees? Anybody have anything they'd like to report? Supervisor Shipley.
Thank you, Chairman Enzlo. I sent all supervisors an email from the airport manager today, from Dave Haynes, our airport manager, regarding, uh, we had a jet land today, uh, from a, that's owned by a Seneca County business, and they are interested in stationing the jet at the county airport. So there's a picture of it. Uh, this would require a larger hangar and would require a thousand, about a thousand-foot runway, which we have previously approved. But quite honestly, we are probably two to three years from design and implementation by the FAA. And I just wanted to keep you all advised that we continue to work on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Any questions?
All right, anybody else on, uh, any special committee reports? Got anything, Paul?
Well, we had a solid waste management meeting today. Uh, I sat with Mitch in on a Zoom and, uh, gave him some ideas and, uh, they are working on a presentation.
Awesome. Sounds good, thank you. Anybody else? Supervisor Jeff Trout.
Um, Soil and Water, uh, they, through the generosity of the county board of supervisors, as you probably recall, we added a, um, agricultural technician. And we interviewed last week and we did offer that to a gentleman, uh, from Yates County. And he will be coming in and spreading the news on best practices. Uh, he's got quite a bit of extensive young, uh, but quite a bit of extensive background in that area. So that's, that's really a positive thing. We had some really good folks that we interviewed, but he was really quite good, so why nobody know that.
Thank you.
And we have begun, Aaron's begun the conversation with the Kuga County about the weed harvesting and those items as well, so.
Sounds good, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Supervisor Hi, oh, Supervisor Partee.
Mitch and I are meeting with New York Engineering Services tomorrow to kick off the broadband engineering study.
Sounds good, thank you. Supervisor, Supervisor Heisen, I'm trying to get more information on, uh, Willard Task for Updates as, as I get it, I'm trying to share it, you know? It's slow coming, but soon as we can get it, we'll share it for sure. I know you asked about that, so.
You both.
Okay. Uh, chairman's remarks. If you look around the room, you'll see some missing photographs, um, thanks to Amanda, Bob, and Mitch. They're working on, uh, getting them reorganized and put back up. Some of the most recent board members, uh, the pictures have been on the floor in the closet, so we're trying to get them dusted off and on the wall. So that's why some of those are missing. Um, so this is a project that's ongoing. Other than that, been busy. I think there's a lot of, uh, positive things in the works. Um, look forward to what we got coming on, so. Uh, county manager Rowe.
Uh, nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, county attorney, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Communications.
Communications 27, 28, and 29 have been received and filed.
Thank you. All right. First up, number 14, Supervisor Reynolds, Ways and Means.
Thank you, Chairman Enzlo. Um, supervisor confirm, ratify, and adopt actions of the Seneca County Treasurer to contract with Auctions International Incorporated for the online auction, auctioneer service for the county tax sale.
First and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 15, Supervisor Reynolds.
Extend tax rolls and bills to the village, for the villages.
Support.
First and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 16, Supervisor Reynolds.
Extend tax rolls and bill extract files to Phelps, Clifton Springs, Ramus, Seneca Falls, South Seneca, Truanceburg, and Waterloo School Districts.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 17, Supervisor Reynolds.
Board of Supervisors authorizes amendments to the 2022 and 22 and 23 Seneca County Budget.
Support.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 18, Supervisor Borst.
Health Department authorized request bids for the annual household hazardous waste collection event.
Support.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 19, Supervisor Borst.
County Manager authorized and directed to sign a contract with the New York State Department of Health for the water enhancement grant.
Support.
First and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 20, Supervisor Borst.
County Manager authorized and directed to sign a contract with the New York State Department of Health for the tobacco enforcement grant.
Support. Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 21, Supervisor Borst.
County Manager authorized and directed to sign a contract with the New York State Department of Health for the immunization action grant.
Support.
First and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 22, Supervisor Borst.
County Manager authorized and directed to sign a contract with the New York State Department of Health for year two of the Healthy Neighborhood Preventative Health Cornerstones Grant and amended 2023 budget.
Support. Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 23, Supervisor Borst.
County Manager authorized and directed to sign contracts with service providers for the 3-5 preschool program.
Support.
First and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 24, Supervisor Borst.
Seneca County Division of Human Services to contract with Children's Home of Wyoming Conference Incorporated for child welfare preventative services for at-home risk youth with juvenile justice and criminal justice concerns.
Support.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 25, Supervisor Borst.
Seneca County Division of Human Services to contract with children awaiting parents, Donald J. Corbett, Adoption Agency for Kinship Companion Family Finding Services.
Support. Second.
Got lots of seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 26, Supervisor Borst.
Resolution of the Seneca County Board of Supervisors authorizing participation in settlement of the matter of the national prescription opioid litigation pertaining to CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart.
Support. Second.
A second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 27, Supervisor Borst.
Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic, CCBHC, Planning Development and Implementation Grant.
Support.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, public works. Number 28, Supervisor Don Trout.
Supervisors approve requests for proposals for curbside recycling services and recycling contract in Seneca County.
Support.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 29, Supervisor Don Trout.
Supervisors approve purchase of 12025 automatic HX 520 six X four ten wheeler for the highway department.
Support. Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 30, Supervisor Don Trout.
Supervisors approve purchase of one new cat CB seven roller for the highway department.
Support. Support.
Support there, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 31, here we go. Agriculture Environmental Affairs Supervisor Cronenwetter, 31.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Seneca County Board of Supervisors opposes proposed changes to New York State Soil and Water Conservation District Law.
Support.
A second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 32, Supervisor Cronenwetter.
Supervisor support sending letters to local and state representatives urging New York State DEC to complete study regarding the high phosphorus levels in Kuga Lake.
Support.
Second. All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 33, Supervisor Cronenwetter.
Board of Supervisor authorizes five-year memorandum of agreement between a county and a Seneca County Soil and Water Conservation District for provision of services and funding process.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 34, Supervisor Cronenwetter.
Seneca County Board of Supervisors support Seneca Lake pollution reduction and allocates funds to support the 2023 efforts.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, number 35, Supervisor Jeff Trout.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, motion for the Board of Supervisors to amend Seneca County policy number 101.216 regarding longevity pay and to have this effective immediately.
Support.
A second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 36.
Sorry. Motion for the Board of Supervisors to approve the creation and filling of one full-time probation officer and abolish one full-time probation assistant.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 37.
Motion for the Board of Supervisors to approve the reclassifying of staff development coordinator from grade four to grade five on the management salary schedule and move that position to DHS.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number 38, Supervisor Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board of Supervisors authorizes contract with Squad Nine LLC for consulting services.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 39, Supervisor Reinhardt.
Authorized acceptance of distribution number 10 grant from the New York State Office of Indigent Legal Services.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Economic Development Tourism, number 40, Supervisor Shipley.
Thank you, Chairman Enzlo. Number 40, authorize snowmobile trail grant applications and signing agreements with Twin Lakes Snowmobile Association.
Support.
A second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 41, Supervisor Shipley.
Seneca County Tourism Promotion and Development Grants Funds Approval for the Town of Covert.
Support.
A second?
Discussion.
Any discussion?
I'd like to discuss.
Supervisor Don Trout.
So if we were to give the town of Covert, they're going in with two other towns, and we just gave them 30 grand, would we own this thing or is it just a one-year thing?
It's a one-year thing. Um, we're just buying a seat at the table for the 30 grand. It's, it's 20, it's 10 grand, it's all we're asking for. Um, yeah, it's 30 altogether. The other two towns each put 10,000 in as well.
I guess I'm asking what it would take for an outright ownership. Is that possible? I'd rather own it than keep piecemealing it along.
The wheels are going a long, 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 long time now, and I don't know if we could stop that truck.
Can you get, can you get a meeting? Oh, I'm sorry.
Supervisor Shipley.
Thank you. Had a conversation with Parks and Recreation. And it's too far in the process to go back now. What's gonna happen is Parks and, New York State Parks would own the property, but they're gonna lease it to this LLC for 20 years. They're gonna be in charge of running it. They'll get all the proceeds for 20 years. And that's all Parks is gonna do is hold title to the property.
Okay. Just so it can't be redeveloped.
Okay. Supervisor Barnhart.
We haven't given any money yet. Covert hasn't ponied up yet. Um, I, I know the wheels are in motion, but it feels like there's still time to get a seat at the table. I mean, I think that what I'd like to see is a meeting set up where some county representatives could make their case to the state or to the development company to have a bigger piece of the pie or to...
We could, um, part of the LLC is, yeah, we got, cause Interlake wants to jump in too, and, um, we're gonna make a, a spot for them as well. Um, no money involved, but, um, um, they will have a seat at the table. They don't have a voting right per se, but they will have a ta, a seat at the table and we can put Seneca County in there as well.
Um... I mean, does Truman'sburg, does Truman'sburg or...
Ulysses?
Would Truman'sburg or Ulysses have an interest in Seneca County stepping up relieving them of the financial burden and, and, and giving them the rights that they need for their water intake and whatnot?
Explain that again, let me run.
Why can't we be the primary or solo player and then form relationships with Ulysses and Truman'sburg to give them what they need? If they need water intakes or park space or whatever it may be. I mean, there's a few supervisors here who have made the case to say, we want in, the county wants in. We have the money, we have the resources. No offense, Mike, it doesn't seem like Covert does, that's why you're asking us. So how do we push all the way in?
Like I say, I don't, like I say, it's gone, like Bob said earlier there, um, it's gone too far now and, um, it's not saying gone too far, it's not like controlling anything or anything, but, uh, the process has started with the LEC and the state parks and everything and we, I don't think we can go back now. But I say that we set up the LEC, LDC, for more members. And that could be Seneca County or Village Interlake and they want in and, um, and we can get more players.
Supervisor Hayes. Then why can't Seneca County buy out all the seats? Then why don't we buy out the seats? What's that? We buy, Seneca County, you gotta set up to buy seats and Seneca County buys all the seats. Why don't we buy them out? Whatever, they haven't put anything in yet, so what is their, what is their stake in the game? Why aren't they not willing?
Like I say, it's gone, it's gone down the road too far, I think.
Doesn't matter, the LLC, it doesn't, at, at this point in time, if the LLC dissolved, the state of New York would have to figure out something else. Don't tell me it's too late. The LLC, no paperwork's been signed, nothing's official, so it's not too late. It's only too late if you don't do anything. Which to me, and I hate to say this, Mike, but you should have come to the board when you first started talking. You couldn't take it over without us and then you come up at the last minute and tell us it's too late and you want us to help you. I say it's all or nothing. I'm not gonna spend my taxpayers' dollars for you guys because you jumped in the game at the freaking end. Forget it. I don't care what these guys think, whether anybody thinks it's a good idea. You should have brought us in at the beginning. You made your bed, then you lie in it and figure out how you're gonna come up with 10,000 or give it all up. That, Ulysses and fricking Truman'sburg and Interlake and all those guys take it over. Let them walk all over you, that's fine. I don't have to answer to it, you do. I'd like to see us in the driver's seat.
Supervisor Don Trout.
Just the driver's seat, that's all. You know, especially Seneca County being there, I'd like to see us in the driver's seat with the, you know, the contract from New York and then, you know, we let who we wanna let in. We make the agreements we wanna make. I think that Mike bringing it to us with the 10 grand and all that, you know, it's better than letting them go in and then all of a sudden we found out about it later on that they got a chunk of this spot that exists in our county, you know? So I would like to see us in the driver's seat if I'm willing to pass this tonight as long as we're pushing more towards us owning the majority membership later on down the line. I mean, if it's too late, it's too late, but I don't wanna see us not have any seat at the table now. I mean, it clearly has gone on that long, you know? So I want us to have a chunk of it, but I'd like to see us have the majority chunk of it, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay. Supervisor Heisen, do you have something?
Well, I agree with Don a little bit, but we need to have the majority. So basically the LDC has gotta be rewritten for us to have the majority in there. So basically you gotta send that, we gotta away with the LDC.
We can renegotiate that. We, we had a meeting about that and we, we can be renegotiated, but they wanna get it going now just because the state parks is gonna, um, they're gonna purchase this land in, um, three, four months.
I would have to see it in writing that we'll be the, we'll be the majority owner of this, if you wanna call it ownership. Not, well, so, well, we'll get it down the road here in a month or two, but we've gone too far, then we aren't. You know, I would think that Truman'sburg and Ulysses will be glad to get out of this. They have to put no money in, you know?
Supervisor Borst.
Uh, Mike, has the LDC been established already?
Yeah, it's been submitted to Albany already.
Submitted to Albany and with those, just the three players?
True. Yeah, I don't think, I think you just turn it in, I guess what I, I haven't done one of these before.
So the LLC's been formed? You have legal documentation that the LXC exists and has AIN number and all this stuff that's required in the state of New York to form an LLC?
It's all been sent to Albany. I don't know what's been approved or not, but, um...
So who's the attorneys that built the LLC? Who's the attorney that built the contract?
Uh, Ulysses lawyer, I don't know.
Another reason why it's not a good idea for Seneca County to get in bed with somebody that's not in this county. I swear to you, it's not a good idea. They can have all the stuff they wanna do, just get out of it. We'll take care of it. We'll allow you to have use for your summer rec programs and the stuff that they're asking for. We'll make sure that all happens for you, but just get out of the table. We'll take care of it. It's not any part of any other county, it's all in Seneca County. The water rights that they need are already established, you can't take them away from the town of Truman'sburg. they need are already established. You can't take them away from the town of Truman'sburg. They go, those pipes go in, that's still state-owned property. It's not gonna go away. The easements that are in place will still be in place.
Right. They're, that's, that's separate from the, everything else anyway.
The only thing is, is that it, it leaves us to decide how we wanna develop that property that we will never own, which is fine, but revenue will come to the county. However form it comes, it comes.
Supervisor Partee.
I just want clarification because I'm hearing two different terms and I'm not sure which is correct. LLC or LDC? Because they're two different things.
LDC.
So it's not an LLC?
LDC.
It's an LDC.
So what's an LDC? Supervisor Jeff Trout.
It's still gotta, it's still gotta be formed in the state of New York. It's still gotta legally be formed. So that's what I'm saying to you. Whether it's an LLC, LDC, it doesn't matter. You have to have authorization from the state of New York to do it. You just can't say you have one.
Supervisor Bernhardt.
I, I think we not only should have the greatest seat at the table, but we have a carrot to dangle too. We've got the biggest budget out of Ulysses, Truman'sburg, Culver, everybody. We've got a lot. We've got ARPA funds that we could spend on this. We could go above and beyond the thirty thousand to show the state and our partners that not only can we scrape by with insurance and development, but we can really, uh, push all in here. So I, I think we've got a great seat at the table.
Supervisor Reinhardt.
Thank you. I just want a clarification. We've been talking about this seat at the table, but correct me if I'm wrong, this ten thousand dollars is nothing more than Culver's insurance for the year, correct? Wasn't that, the ten thousand dollars bought the insurance?
Well, that goes toward the insurance. Goes toward the insurance, and whatever shows up, somebody's got to buy a lawnmower sooner or later to mow this place.
County's got lots of those.
Supervisor Borst.
Mike, would it be possible to get a meeting together with Ulysses, Truman'sburg, Interlake, and all the players at the table, the, the parks, and, you know, maybe, I mean, to my thought, I, I drove down there today and, and took a look at the property, and it needs a lot of work. I don't see Ulysses, Culver, Truman'sburg, Interlake, and, you know, if they're, maybe their budgets are a lot beefier than my budget is, but, than your budget is, beefier than mine, but it needs a lot of work. A lot of buildings need to be removed. A lot of, there's no parking lot. There's no, uh, there's weeds growing up over. I mean, it's been, you know, kind of neglected for a bunch of years. I know the Boy Scouts will come in and, and fix it up for the summer, but it's gonna, to make it a, a safe park for, you know, like a New York State Park, I'm sure there's gonna be certain regulations they're gonna have to have you follow. Um, you know, can we all sit down at the table with all the players in the room, and maybe Ulysses only jumped in because they wanted it for rec, and maybe they're, if somebody else wanted to be a player and, and, you know, is it onset at the seat of the, you know, driving, maybe they'd be like, hey, let's give it up. I don't wanna spend a half million dollars a year to do this.
I'd just rather have us in charge of a piece of property that's in our county, that's all. You know, uh, when it first came up, and we were talking about last May, Mike, that was kind of the first time I heard of it, and after thinking about it for a week or two, I was like, man, we really should own that. Let other people decide who we want in. It really, it didn't strike me at the meeting two weeks ago, but after thinking about it for a week, I was like, man, really shouldn't be up to people that aren't in the county to decide what's gonna go on in the county. That's all. That's the thought process to it, whatever that takes to do. I think I'm willing to do it, as long as the price tag isn't a million dollars, which it doesn't sound like it is. This sounds like a pretty easy football to handle. I don't know where we are. Like Bob said, we're a little bit too far down the road, but maybe we're not. You know, let's, I think that we really need to look into taking this and letting other people in later on if we want them in.
Parks is gonna buy the property.
Right.
All they're looking for is someone, a group, to run it on a yearly, for a twenty-year basis.
We're the one.
Yep, for twenty years. We're willing to step up to the plate.
Supervisor Reinhardt.
Thank you. Uh, Mike, you made the comment tonight for the first time that Interlake is now looking to get in. Are, have they committed any money to this yet?
No, no dollars. Yeah, they just, we haven't given them, we haven't given them a price, so we don't know. They don't, we don't know what they want. They want summer rec. They all want summer rec. Truman'sburg and Ulysses, they want a place for their kids in summer because they can't use a school, which, that doesn't make any sense to me, but, um, they won't let them in there, and they need a place for their kids in the summer. They go to run down the road another mile to mechanic, but they have some, it's a little pricey too if they own a place. They can kinda get them in cheaper and, um, let them run around all summer.
And, and if this doesn't, for whatever reason, doesn't make it through tonight, are you going to lose that seat at the table?
What you dropped?
I probably will. I probably will.
But that mean, does that mean that they can't go forward or that they have to renegotiate?
Oh, no, they're gonna go with or without me. They, no, they're.
Supervisor Bronell.
I'd like to make a motion. We table this with the idea that we are willing to do it, but we gotta know we got control of the thing.
I don't know, you're gonna have control.
Well.
I just have a question. It's probably for Mr. Edman. Is there something legally that we can do to put a stop to it? Or?
We're not, it's not us. I mean, I guess we could argue that it's on our ground if we could try, but I don't think that's a very supportive position.
Supervisor Cromwether, did you have something?
I forgot what I was gonna say, but still, if we, uh, take this over completely, you're talking of, with, you know, what's the budget of Kewalakee State Park to maintain that and operate it?
I don't know. What's the budget Sessler gets out of the, what's Sessler's budget for Seneca Lakes Resort?
Kewalakee State Park.
Oh, Seneca Lake Resorts. He's running that.
Yeah.
Okay, so you think they're doing it for free or loss of profit?
No, I'm.
Okay, well, that's the same way this is.
I think that's a different ballgame.
Oh, this is the same ballgame. The state's gonna own the land, and whatever money's made off the land, you get to keep. That's exactly what Bob said.
We had a conversation with the head of the park today.
Okay, so if we're gonna get to keep any revenue that's made, it's just like if Sessler couldn't make money, he wouldn't have invested the money he did into Sampson.
Well, I know. He, he did a beautiful job.
So there you go.
Supervisor Heisen.
Example of why it's not a good idea to give up that much.
I don't, uh.
Especially in a tourism county.
Couldn't be made in a beautiful spot, but I think the ship has sailed.
It's gonna get expensive to make that nice.
Supervisor Heisen, do you have something?
Not right this moment.
Okay.
It sounds as if everybody's agreeing, is in favor of putting the money there if we have control. That's how, I just wanna make sure we got control, that's all.
And we have a good track record with Sampson.
Can we talk to the, who are the people at, in the town of Ulysses and the Truman'sburg that are at the table in this LDC? Who are the other members of the?
Mayor, mayor, um.
So can you get us, can you get me, can you get me names and numbers so I can see if I can at least talk to them and see if there's a way that they can, we can work around this?
Gordon Hart and Caitlin, Caitlin can't come, think of her last name.
I'm sure they would be willing to come to the table and say, okay, this is what you guys need. We're willing to help you with your needs, but we also have the budget to keep it going. You guys needed a partner to even get this far. We don't need the partner. We are the partner. We'll be more than happy to take you guys out of the equation and give you what you need. If what you need is a place for your kids to go, that's not the issue. That's an easy issue to go overcome.
And every LDC, LLC, S corp, all have bylaws that can be renegotiated and resubmitted? Every single one of them?
Right, that's what I'm saying. It's easy to get to the table and say, don't put any money up. We'll take care of the money. We'll give you, we'll get it to the table and make us the controlling interest in your LDC. I don't really care. But what I'm saying to you is to give it up, and to lose two-thirds of the availability of what's going on is crazy. It just doesn't, it's not logical. Why the state wouldn't have come to us, the county to begin with, at the very beginning of the whole thing is, is crazy. It just doesn't make any sense.
Supervisor Borst.
Mike, so you've got the LDC. Has your LDC signed any paperwork with the state?
What's that?
Has your LDC signed any paperwork with the state? The LDC is?
It's all been sent to, it's all in Albany.
With the, with the state parks for the takeover or just the creation?
Creation.
So you haven't signed any paperwork with the state parks at all? So, I mean, to me, you know, we could create an.
They don't own the camp yet. They, they don't own it.
So I don't see.
Boy Scouts still own it.
We've got plenty of time.
I mean, I, if no paperwork's been signed with the state, I don't see how, we're too far in.
Or you could let that LDC die and start a new LDC with stakeholders, as long as the state signs off on it.
And would the county need an LDC to, to do it?
Supervisor Heisen.
I was thinking, Ernie's motion there to table it.
Okay. Supervisor Bronell, motion?
Make a motion.
Yep. You got a second? All those in favor, tabling?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Those are two nays, and the rest is for it, so it's tabled.
You gotta stay in the opinion.
In the opinion of the chair.
Motion passes, then hit the gavel.
Motion to table passes.
So what do we gotta do now? What do I, what do I need to, what do I need?
Back to the drawing board. Everybody wants a seat at the table.
We want a meeting. What kinda, what kinda meeting?
We're gonna bring some cash in a briefcase.
Mike, can you get, can you email me the, um, the, the other people that are in it? I'll just have a simple conversation. We can move it along pretty quick if they just have a simple conversation.
Mr. Chairman.
I don't have a problem with, I don't think the board has an issue with what we want to do. We all know what we wanna do. I wanna keep it going, and everybody does.
All right, we voted to table that, so we gotta move on here.
Can I just ask one thing? There's a lot of talk going on. Maybe in the best, uh, going forward is if you could appoint one or two people to speak to the other stakeholders rather than having everybody go back and forth. If you would appoint one or two people to speak on behalf of the county with these other stakeholders, it would probably streamline this process, and they could come back and?
Well, I would, uh, I would think it, it came out of, uh, uh, development and tourism with Supervisor Shipley. I think, would you take the lead on that and go back to them and talk to them or no?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll get with, I'll get with Mike and see if we can make some headway.
Okay. That sound good?
The, the state parks is still gonna own the property. All, all, all we're gonna be able to negotiate possibly is a different group for, that would have a twenty-year lease for running the property.
I think that's what everybody wants.
Right?
Yep.
That, that's what you're all interested in?
Yep.
Supervisor Jeff Trout.
And I would just ask, um, Mr. Chairman or Mr. Chairman of the committee, would it be possible to have something in writing exactly laying out what this is?
Road map.
Once you've done it, so, once you've had those conversations, so we can actually look at something and say, this is what's being proposed? Cause you know, whether it's ownership, or it's a seat at the table, or it's, whatever it is, it would just be nice to have that in writing.
And we invite them up, up here for the committee meeting in two weeks?
Who you wanna invite?
And Truman'sburg, and Culver for that matter. Mike's will be here.
I'll be here anyway. You make me come.
Face to face with during the committee meeting and see what they wanna do. Maybe they wanna get out.
I think we should get a feeler first. Talk to them first. Get the feeler before you invite them. Invite them if they wanna come. Let's get a feeler where, where Truman'sburg and Ulysses stand.
I think Dave, I think Dave Hayes can make those phone calls right away.
I'll make it as I get home. I have no problem.
All right.
I'll get you the number before the night's over, so trust me.
All right. Number forty-two, Supervisor Shipley.
Thank you. Starting again, Seneca County Tourism Promotion and Development Grant Funds approved for 2023 Seneca Falls Heritage Express.
So move.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number forty-three, Supervisor Shipley.
Again, Tourism Promotion and Development Grant Funds approved for 2023 Lowdi Summer Festival.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Any unfinished business? All right. New business. Don, you wanna carry this?
Yeah, I gotcha.
Rule twenty-nine for me?
Yeah, motion to enact rule twenty-nine for all matters, uh, which would fall underneath such a rule.
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. Okay, we got A here. Supervisor Shipley. You wanna make a motion on that resolution?
For?
A, under rule twenty-nine?
For forty-five?
Yes.
Which resolution, for forty-five?
Forty-five A, yep.
I thought, I thought we handled this before. Am I wrong?
It changed. The term changed.
Yeah, the years changed.
The, when we submitted our initial application, uh, we'd asked for the time period to extend beyond two years, uh, and our assembly, our representatives initiated the, the appropriate bills. However, in conferences, it was determined that, uh, any of the taxes will only be, sales taxes will only be extended for the two years and nothing more. Since bill numbers had already been assigned, uh, we were advised that we had to submit another resolution requesting, uh, bills to be submitted.
Okay. I understand. Clear. Okay, resolution approving Homerul legislation for passage of Senate Bill Number S forty-nine seventy-five A and Assembly Bill Number A five zero zero eight A introducing New York State Legislation for Extension of Additional One Percent Seneca County Sales Tax for Two Years.
Support.
Got a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, sure. You only want one percent?
Take it easy, buddy.
Sure.
You're lucky you got that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. Supervisor Reinhardt, would you like to do this for me?
Board of Supervisors declares the second week of April 2023 as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Seneca County.
Support.
Lots of support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. Number C, Supervisor Reinhardt.
Supervisors adopt proposed local law three of the year 2023, a local law to waive residency for certain positions within the Seneca County Sheriff's Office.
Support.
Lots of support. Any discussion?